Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, our regularly scheduled board meeting in the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise and thanksgiving for who you are. We thank you for your love, your mercy that endures forever. We ask you to bless the employees of Hillsborough County, bless all the residents of our great county that you've so greatly blessed us with, and we ask you to bless those that are having any health issues in their bodies, that they would be healthy and whole, in your holy name. And we pray for each commissioner here, that we would be a blessing to your people. And we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
It's a real treat for me to present today's commendation. We have some very special guests with us here, wearing Smurf blue uniforms, here in the, here in the front row. It's Lutes eight U softball team, who are World Series champions. I'd like to invite the team to join me at the podium. We have Coach Ryan Darling, Coach Erica Harris, Coach Amanda Torres, and Coach Alex Arahu. And the players, please come on up. I bet you guys are excited about missing school, huh? Yeah, I bet, I bet. Well, it's a great pleasure to, to welcome, welcome you all here this morning. Thank you for coming. Hillsborough County is home of champions, and we see it at every level, with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, the Tampa Bay Lightning, University of Tampa baseball team, Jesuit High School, wrestling and baseball teams have all won numerous titles. And now we have another member to Champa Bay here, and that's Lutes softball, which is an outstanding program, and I can say that from personal experience. My daughter is currently a high school senior playing softball, and her very first, very first softball team was Lutes, your program. So I've seen, I've seen it from, as a, as a father, and you guys have a very, very bright future ahead of you, so keep up, keep up the good work. But these amazing young ladies and their coaches had quite a summer. They won a championship in fast pitch softball, which is, as we all know, extremely competitive, it's played throughout the world, and it's my understanding they did it in dominant fashion as well. I'm honored to recognize this fantastic team with this incredible accomplishment. I'm going to read the commendation, which states, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is proud to give a standing ovation to Lutes softball for winning the eight-and-under division of the two thousand and twenty-four Babe Ruth League World Series in Florence, Alabama. A fantastic achievement for the community to celebrate. Talented, self-motivated, and willing to put in extra work after practicing games, Lutes softball punched their ticket, the Babe Ruth World Series, by winning the state championship in July, after an undefeated run through district and state tournaments, a first in the thirty-plus-year history of the program." Amazing. "These talented third and fourth graders displaying remarkable teamwork and skills did not let up after arriving in Alabama for the World Series. They steamrolled to the championship game and defeated Jefferson Parish, Louisiana Recreation Department East for the eight-and-under title. Jesselyn Quintana was selected Most Outstanding Player, a wonderful accomplishment. Lutes also placed three top-ten hitters on the World, on the All-World Series team and two Golden Glove winners on the All-Golden Glove team out of one hundred and fifty players in the tournament. An amazing showing. The hard work, dedication, and championship reflect the strong commitment of the team, coaches, and parents to Lutes softball. This outstanding nonprofit youth sports organization enables girls ages four to eighteen to be engaged and active in fast pitch softball, teaches world-class sportsmanship, and ensures all players are equipped to be the best they can be on and off the field. The Board of County Commissioners, Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Lutes softball for bringing home the World Series championship and applauds the program for its significant positive impacts on the lives of these girls, awarded this eighteenth day of September two thousand and twenty-four." And before I ask the coaches, say a few words, I just want to, as a former coach myself for my daughter and my son, I just want to thank the coaches for all of your hard work and everything you put in to teach these girls both on and off the field. And also, a special thank you to the parents for all the sacrifices that you make so these girls can play ball and have fun. And with that, Coach, do you have to say a few words?
Sure. First, I just want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners here for having us. It's an honor. I also want to publicly say thank you to the parents for letting us coach your kids. It's been a pleasure. I think what most people don't realize is that the softball season starts in February, and the World Series is played at the end of July. So it is a five, almost full six-month season, and it's a lot of softball. So thank you, girls, for letting us coach you. I know it takes a lot of patience. As a coach, you know, you hope that they hear you, and this is just proof that they, they have, they've listened the whole time. The impressive part is they work, you know, on the field, and then more importantly, they go home with their parents and they work even more, and it shows. So Lutes has accomplished a lot over the last forty years of its existence. This was the fortieth anniversary of Babe Ruth, so I think it's, it's kind of special that Lutes is forty years old and Babe Ruth is forty years old, and you girls won the championship that year. The, the last piece is that Lutes has won a lot of district tournaments, right? So we've, I think we've won four in a row. Some of these girls have been on at least two or three of the teams. We've, we've never even been close to winning states, and you guys won states, and we've only been, what, the best is, I think, was sixth or fourth at the World Series, and you girls took it home. So thank you to everybody that was involved, parents, other coaches, appreciate you. Commissioners, we appreciate you as well. Thank you very much. Lillian?
Thank you for having us, and I'm glad that we were on the World Series team and that I made friends through the park season.
All right. Well, congratulations once again.
No, that one has been deleted.
It's been deleted?
We can just go to the, to the changes.
Let's take a picture and enjoy your day off, if you don't have to go back to school, but
Okay. Bonnie?
Thank you. That's a tough act to follow with those girls.
otherwise, I hope you, I hope you enjoyed your, your field trip.
All righty, we have one off the agenda item.
We had, we had nature's classroom back when I was in school, but this is pretty cool
This is item B three. This is to approve letters of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration,
you guys get to come down here. We appreciate you coming. Thank you to the parents again for, for bringing them down, and let's take a, let's
ACHA, for participation in the low-income pool, graduate medical education, and related
take a picture.
Congratulations.
intergovernmental transfer IGT programs. They're collectively called the BLIP programs, which require intergovernmental transfers to ACHA in the amount not to exceed thirty-one million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, eighteen cents. We have one commendation that was, has been deleted from the agenda by Commissioner Miller, recognizing a kid's place. We have one item also has been deleted, item A forty-six. This is to approve record destruction requests to destroy records for the clerk of circuit court. We have several items for time certain. The first one is item D one. This is at ten a.m. This is conduct a public hearing to consider approval of the special assessment, resolution, and assessment role, which will allow the county to impose and collect a non-advalormous special assessment for the purpose of benefiting assessed properties through the enhanced Medicaid program payments for local services. This is related to item B two. Also at ten a.m. is item B two, which is related to item D one. This is to approve letters of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration for participation in the direct payment program, which provides supplemental payments from the federal government to eligible hospitals that provide services to Medicaid and managed care recipients in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. The last item for time certain is at ten a.m. This is item D two. This is to hold a public hearing to receive public input to discuss modifying the approved list of projects for Phase Four of the Community Investment Tax. This, the changes include adding six projects, which include five transportation projects and one fire services program. Eleven forty-five to recess for lunch, those are the changes to the agenda.
Can we have a motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote and change the agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens on any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, at the same time, as requested, when you address the board, please do not direct your comments at staff or the board, but rather the issues. We set aside forty-five minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which your requests to speak have been received. Please state your name and speak clearly in the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. First three speakers this morning are Justin LaRosa, followed by Bonnie Hoffman, and then Denise Herndon. Is Mr. LaRosa here? If not, Bonnie Hoffman? Good morning.
Bonnie Hoffman, seventy-five years old. I have some knowledge. I was here September fourth, two weeks ago, to address four Republican commissioners. I did not expect to be back here today, but I was remiss in not including that our educators also worry about their lives and their students' lives. September fifth was an ugly reminder when two Georgia high school students and two Georgia high school teachers came home in body bags. After every one of our school massacres, a student or parent repeats the same words, "We never thought it would happen here in our town and our school." J.D. Vance said, and I'm quoting after listening to his video, "I don't like this, but it's a fact of life." As you know, Friday was a busy day for Sheriff Conister with bomb threats at Newsome High School, but what you may not know is on that same day, Friday morning, my grandson's school, Gori Elementary, was in a lock-in for hours because a father threatened to shoot up the school and targeted two specific teachers at Gori. Esteban Del Valle was arrested with possession of ammo. How do you think Gori Elementary students and those two underpaid teachers felt entering school Monday needing increased security? In years past, I was often here with the Lutes community, opposing the Lutes mall, dealing with transportation, water restrictions, school overcrowding, incompatible development. We saw a new football stadium go in, a legend field, a hockey arena, soccer teams. Commercial and residential developments exploded like Westchase. Elementary, middle, and high schools were built. Do you know why? Because commissioners like Joe Chalora, Jan Platt, Phyllis Buzansky, Sylvia Kimball, Ed Turancheck, Pam Maureo, and many others who followed cared about our children. They didn't hurt our children and hurt our educators and try to sabotage the school board. In over forty years, I never saw a B O C C tax the school board as you did. You tried to block a school board tax referendum, and as I said on September fourth, you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Appreciate your remarks. Next three speakers, Denise Herndon, Marcelo Rivera, and Brandon Pollard. Good evening, or good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I've been blessed so much by God, and it's amazing how he works. The only reason I moved to Hillsborough County was because Wes Kearney of Kearney Construction made a handshake agreement with Brian McCray, a concrete company. Kearney's sons did not honor that business or that handshake agreement, and it was attuned to Brian McCray losing a quarter of a million dollars in his concrete business of almost a hundred people. Brian McCray was based out of Hillsborough County. I met him working for Mason Rebuilders out of town. I moved here. I thought we were going to get married. We didn't. Lo and behold, the house that I am currently in happens to be next door to Wes and Joanne Kearney, who have passed away now, but they had first option to purchase my home. The only reason they didn't exercise that option, Joanne told me they were on vacation. That's the only reason I have my home right now. A lot of big construction companies are being controlled by this county commissioners. And the EPA is being, people are getting into the EPA, FDA, CDC, pharmaceutical companies' people to sway county commissioners, federal governments, to do things. The CDC is funded seventy-five percent or more by the pharmaceutical companies. Our medical schools are funded by the pharmaceutical companies. You want to think about the cancers? They've got the FDA to approve that only a prescription drug can cure a disease, and that's not true. Type two diabetes is caused by diet, and it can be healed by diet. Our government allows so many chemicals in our food, our skin products, and right now, U-County commissioners are wanting to approve the EIP changes. It was canceled last night because they want to do some changes. You need to think about the EPA and what their recommendations are for contaminated land. If you don't test this land, you will never know how contaminated it is and then have cluster cancers way down the road. So please, county commissioners, you are stewards of our Hillsborough County properties and everything, and if you approve this EIP, you are not being good stewards to the property around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Our next three speakers, Marcelo Rivera, Brandon Pollard, and Nicole McCutcheon.
I'm actually, this is my first time actually speaking at a county commissioner meeting. On my side here, my name is Masia Rivera. I represent the Plantation Homosid Association in Carrollwood. On my side here, we got our resident here, Mr. Frank. Mr. Frank, say your name.
Frank Winkleman.
Okay. And the reason for my, for my visit here is, is very simple here, folks. I represent the association, now the president for the association for the last five years. Plantation has been around for over forty years, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the Plantation Homosid Association. We right now are suffering a lot of lack of negligence in association. Two sidewalks are rose in horrible condition. The last time we actually had a rose basically done, it'd been close to almost thirty-five years ago. So right now, we're not, it's a major need of our roads. I know the state basically is basically granted some funding for, for the, for the state to give us some money as well, too, and I would like for you guys to at least reconsider, basically, give us money for the, for the. We have been working very strongly with you guys as well, too. We have done everything in our power. We have basically done, in two thousand and nineteen, when I basically became involved with, with association, we even did a, a wet study to the, for the, for the, for the roads, for the roads and everything else. In fact, we have basically talked to engineers, we have talking to people to come out. We have, people have come out to our association, but it's like the same old song. We're going to look into it, we're going to look into it, keep putting us in the back burner. But folks, that back, it gets to the point that nothing is getting, actually is getting done, and with that, we have, we even had a resident in the Willaboy Subdivision, they basically got killed, basically from his form, he fell and basically hit his head on, on one of the, one of the sidewalks and basically died from his injuries. With that, we have a lot of lawsuits right now pending right now. In fact, you guys got two cases right now, and I'll let Mr. Frank read for you guys right now real quick.
Plantation has had two personal injury lawsuits in recent, you know, filed against them in recent years. Okay. The, basically, there's people that have tripped on the uneven sidewalks. That one was settled out of court. That was still void along, along costly court case. The second one is active. The county has also been named as a defendant in that case. The HOA vigorously defending themselves against that, on that, against that case. Okay. The, the insurance has gone up by seventy-two percent. Okay. There's more, there's more coming, you know. The sidewalks, as, as someone in a wheelchair all the time, and what you see me in now is just to get me here to the courthouse, I'm in a lot more advanced wheelchair, and I'm in it all the time. And there's areas that I cannot access, period, because sidewalks are so uneven, I have to go around in the grass to get through places. Sometimes when I, when I make that to go around on the grass, I'll get stuck in mud. It's a four-hundred-pound wheelchair. I can't, I can't get it out. Okay. Usually I have to wait, hopefully somebody will come by that can help me. And it's not just once in a while, it's, it's fairly often. You know, you, after a while, you learn to avoid some of the places, but, you know, sometimes there's places where you want to go, if you want to access some of the, the common grounds. And it's made of, the sidewalks and the roads have been very difficult to access.
Okay. I'm going to go and share with you guys, I know, we, it's only three minutes. If I may, I get a few more seconds to show some pictures, if I may?
Forty-five seconds, yep.
Okay. Do you some of the, if I may, help me out, please? Yeah. These are some of the pictures, if I may, some of the pictures here. If you got, this is Mr. Frank right there. We do have several other wheelchair people that cannot have access to these roads, but if you look at the sidewalks here, this is, God, this is a lot of negligence, patch-up job. They pretty much call a subdivision a patch-up job, because all the money that we're getting is only for patch-up, and I basically encourage you guys to please look at some of these photos here. Please carry on. This, this is recently right now. Path holes falling in. There's a video that I want to show you guys, what, too, if I may? This is, those are actually roots.
Can you show the video?
Please, show the video, please. This is the, this is the, the same sidewalk that the guy actually got killed, Mr. Bob. He's just saying right now, trying to get to his, trying to get to his house.
All right. Thank you very much for, for coming down, Mr. Rivera. I know that you've been communicating with, with Gloria in my office, and I've personally toured that last site right there and saw it, took a picture and sent it in to staff. I will tell you that we have a record number of investments in this year's budget for both sidewalks and resurfacing, and I have a meeting, I think it's scheduled for tomorrow, to discuss plantation in, in particular, so my office will keep you updated, but thank you for coming down and really visualizing and showing the pictures of it, because, you know, we have enormous backlogs in both resurfacing and sidewalks needs, but to actually see it, I think, highlights the need that, that we have there, and so I appreciate you, you coming down.
If I may, one more thing.
Of course.
I want to thank you personally, I want to thank you, sir, for coming out for yourself and pretty much when it's, what was actually going on. I also want to thank your staff also, Gloria, she's been a major asset to us as well, too, and your staff as well, too, and I thank you, and we, we hope that we continue working together for the better of the community. Thank you so much, Mr. Frank.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just want to thank you also for coming down. We rarely get this kind of personal testimony. That's so well done. Hillsborough County, over and over and over again, is number two in pedestrian and bicycle deaths across the country, in the entire country, and a lot of it is bad design, a lot of, and, and then things like this, when people cannot keep to the sidewalks or cannot safely cross, and I have to say, it kind of breaks my heart when I drive along Fowler Avenue in the bike lanes all the time, I see someone in a wheelchair in the bike lanes because there isn't another place for them to be. So I think we need to be reminded of this over and over again in the, in the investment, and very much appreciate it.
Thank you so much for everyone. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bonnie, do you want to make a comment?
I, I was just going to say Josh Bellotti is back there, too.
Okay.
I know he's been working with your office.
All right, thank you. We got Brandon Pollard and then Nicole McCutcheon. Come on down. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Royce Pollard. I am a high school student at Leito High School. I'm a senior there. I have been there for four years. I've been a Hillsborough County resident for about March twenty twenty, so since the beginning of COVID. I come to you to speak for thousands and even millions, I plead the same values that I convey to you all today. In Hillsborough County, there are five skate parks ran by the county on hcfl.gov. Apollo Beach, Fish Hawk, Carrollwood, Jackson Springs, and last but not least, Providence Skate Park. All of these do not allow bikes or scooters of any sort, meaning there's no flexibility for the actual professional riders or people who take these sports seriously. And why that is such a big factor for not only the community of action sports, but for the county, one, Tampa in particular is actually a very huge visiting spot for action sports. Take Skate Park of Tampa, for example, they hold basically Olympics of action sports every year, people from Europe, Asia, et cetera, they all come down here every year, and they want to visit for these skate parks, and that's one. Two, injuries. There are thousands of people that are older than me, some in their thirties, twenties, some in like twelve, they're not even a teenager yet, and they're getting injured on the streets because we can't go to these parks, we can't access them, and this leads to a lot of injuries and it leads to a lot of
I have been there for four years. I've been a Hillsborough County resident for about March 2020, so since the beginning of COVID. I come to you to speak for thousands and even millions, I would plead the same values that I convey to you all today. In Hillsborough County, there are five skate parks ran by the county on hcfl.gov. Apollo Beach, Fish Hawk, Carrollwood, Jackson Springs, and last but not least, Providence Skate Park. All of these do not allow bikes or scooters of any sort, meaning there's no flexibility for the actual professional riders or people who take these sports seriously. And why that is such a big factor for not only the community of action sports, but for the county. One, Tampa in particular is actually a very huge visiting spot for action sports. Take Skate Park of Tampa, for example, they hold basically Olympics of action sports every year, people from Europe, Asia, et cetera, they all come down here every year, and they want to visit for these skate parks, and that's one. Two, injuries. There are thousands of people that are older than me, some in their 30s, 20s, some in like 12, they're not even a teenager yet, and they're getting injured on the streets because we can't go to these parks, we can't access them. And this leads to a lot of injuries, and it leads to a lot of liability issues for a lot of businesses. So that gives action sports a whole bad rep, rep, excuse me, we're viewed as a small, we're viewed as, as if we break traffic laws, et cetera. But huge part of that is because people are getting injured, we can't access these parks. Now, in my opinion, there is no signical logical reason for denying the widespread growth of action sports, not just picking and choosing who to support, primarily argued, the primarily used argument is that scooters being met, bikes damage our skate parks, more specifically the concrete. Now, that is the same reason that Team Pain and Hillsborough County are very close together for these parks. But the thing is, Team Pain, they built skate parks all around America, and me, along with thousands of others, have written at each of these, and they are indeed built for scooters and bikes. Above all, the message I'm trying to spread is that action sports is much more than just skateboarding, inline, and scooters. But I say this with my full and biased opinion that all the action sports have no right to say who's better or anything, that we all deserve to ride as one, not be segregated from each other, and specifically for the safety of the future of our generation, because a lot of these new businesses, for example, I want to be a business owner and own a skate shop.
All right. Thank you, thank you for coming down. I'll make sure our staff contact you, gets with you on this. I'm certainly open and enamored with the idea. I will tell you that skate parks haven't been around that long, and neither have dog parks, and the reason why we have, the very first dog park that I champion years ago was a student came up, just like you, made the suggestion, the request, and then a year later, we had a dog park. So we hear you, and I'll make sure our staff gets you and see, see if we can do anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, last speaker this morning, Nicole McCutcheon. Is Nicole here? If not, okay, that closes the public comment portion. Can we have a motion on the consent agenda? Motion, Commissioner Kemp.
Second.
Second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie.
Okay, we can go to the regular agenda, then. The first item is item B1. This is to approve a lease agreement with Redlands Christian Migrant Association as a childcare and early learning facility for migrant farmworkers and rural low-income families. John Mueller is here to present this item. Dr. Jay is here as well, as well as R CMA representatives, and this was the item that was carried over from last meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Mueller, Director for Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. Today, we're here for item B1 regarding a lease for Redlands Christian Migrant Association, R CMA, on county property in Wyomama, which was continued at the B O C C 94 meeting until today. At that meeting, additional information on who the constituents are being served at that R CMA, R CMA location was requested. Today, we have with us two members of R CMA, Kathy Vega, the Associate Executive Director, and Makrina Vega, the Area Coordinator. Before opening to your questions, I would like to note a few, a few items. So the start date of the new lease has been clarified. If, if it were approved today by the board, the effective date would be today. Any extensions beyond the proposed 10-year initial term would come back for B O C C approval. A resolution is also included in the background with the lease and would be approved along with the lease. RCA's recent information they provided us, which was in your backup, did have an update. Beginning with March of this year, the federal law removed any income threshold requirements for migrant Head Start program, but not the school readiness program. The migrant Head Start program requires only that one family member's income comes primarily from agricultural work. So if you could, please, slide one, first slide. So included in your background was information that R CMA provided after that meeting request. So the summary of the two programs which they offer at county locations was included, as I mentioned, migrant and seasonal Head Start and school readiness. A summary of all three county locations, property locations, for which R CMA currently has agreements for was also included. This was since there are two more agreements with them that are undergoing review that also offer these programs. So we wanted to give you the total picture on what's, what'll be coming up after today. Also included was the R CMA locations that $54,520 of county funding, which they've received annually since 2011, supports programming for, that was also included. For this particular agenda item lease, the one that is for today, R CMA has provided that the constituents, the constituents served are 129 children and families, of which 92 are the children enrolled in the migrant and seasonal Head Start and 37 in school readiness. I'll note that they also included, which was in your backup, a question and answer that describes program eligibility and their definitions of the seasonal and migrant farm workers. And I'll ask Ms. Vega to please come up, Ms. Kathy Vega, will be here as well to answer questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Vega. I'm the Associate Executive Director for R CMA, and I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. Hillsborough County has began leasing this property to the Redlands Christian Migrant Association in 1981. So it's been there for some, almost 45 years, a long, long time. Ronald Reagan was president at the time that it started. You know, I haven't heard any reason that the county shouldn't continue to lease this space. It's a very admirable mission that Redlands Christian Association's been on for a long, long time, and important community use, and I, and I know many members of this community greatly appreciate the work that's being done. The property's, as we heard, is being used to care for and educate young children of agricultural workers. We all talk about the importance of agriculture in this community and in Hillsborough County, and this is a way to support the families at the front lines of our agriculture, essential workers, I'll say, doing the work in the fields, the growing season's approaching as we head into cooler weather now, and we should approve this item and support them in the incredible work that the Redlands Christian Migrant Association does to educate these children. So with that, I'll, I'll move approval.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I took the time to actually reach out to our agricultural community, which was who initially red-flagged this for me on the consent agenda and informed me of the details about how H2A, since Ronald Reagan was in office in 1986, decimated the original need for migrant workers. Well, rather, it decimated the way in which farmers hired workers. H2A, they particularly dislike just because it's so expensive, but it's kind of how the federal government gets involved and makes things work. And I would argue that just because something's been around for so long doesn't justify, well, we could keep doing it. I think that that's a horrible position to, to take personally, but I will say that they voiced and expressed continued need for it. However, their concerns was that they don't know in 10 years how many farmers are even going to be left in Hillsborough County because of the trajectory of our agricultural community. Their recommendation that I received was that, that they do see a need, but that they would rather see it as five-year increments, four, five-year terms, that we could come back and review every five years, and if there is still a need for those true migrant workers in the community, then we can continue to facilitate and fund these options. So I will make a substitute motion to approve, approve the lease agreement with four, five-year renewals.
Okay, we have a substitute motion by Commissioner Winstall. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Don't see anyone in the queue, so please record your vote on the substitute motion.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Myers voted no.
Okay, thank you. Next up.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Our next item is item B3. This is approved letters of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, participation in low-income pool graduate program, and related intergovernmental transfers. And while Jean Early is coming to the podium, I wanted to apologize for this being an off-the-agenda item. I think those of you know, I rarely do that, and it's only done because of the timing that was associated with this. But we definitely, it is not our practice to do so.
Good morning, Jean.
Good morning. I'm Jean Early, Department Director for Healthcare Services. The LIP program is basically for those IGT agreements with the ACHA. They provide government support to safety net providers for the use of, or for, you know, for helping them with the cost of uncompensated charity care for low-income individuals who are uninsured. It allows the county to remit payments to ACHA to leverage millions of federal match dollars. ACHA then pays providers the accounting amount plus the federal match, and this year, the county will pay ACHA $31 million, and the providers will receive $86 million. And I request approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you. That's, I mean, that's kind of a really quick overview of a lot of money. Can you tell me the past payments of this program, just in recent years?
This is Debbie DeWitt, and she sort of manages our IGT program, so I'll let her answer that.
Thank you.
The only number I have off the top of my head, last year was $31 million as well.
And can you tell me the registrations for the program from last year to this year? Or the previous year to the current year, I guess?
I'm sorry, the registrations?
The, the users of this program.
This year, it's Tampa General, Tampa Family.
No, 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 I mean, the amount of people that are leveraging this healthcare service program to these providers.
I apologize, I don't understand.
I'm not sure I understand it either.
Individuals that are benefiting from the program.
I don't know that. I don't think anybody knows that exactly. But basically, ACHA goes into an agreement with the contractor providers, those that wish to participate, like Tampa General, the two federally qualified health centers, Anne Grace Point and Cove, receive, they're eligible to participate based on ACHA's recommendations. ACHA does it based, as I understand it, on the amount of charity care that, that's provided, and we basically project that based on last year's utilization. When that's done, then they, they basically don't, you know, they basically don't get any, get payment from the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan, but we send that same amount of money up to ACHA. And ACHA then gets, and then ACHA gets the federal match, and they provide all of that to the, to them. But we do not measure it in terms of the number of people.
So you don't track how many people are benefiting from this tax?
No, sir, I don't, because it's done by ACHA.
Isn't one of the requirements of the tax, dating all the way back to 1991, that there is a confirmation that anybody benefiting from it must be a registered, verified domicile resident of Hillsborough County?
In this case, I mean, we can go and look and see how many people that, that provided services that we got from there, but in the end, what happens is, we never pay the provider, and so this just basically goes.
Hold on, Miss Early, hold on. You keep saying that. You are expending tax funds. Simple yes or no? You are, you are spending indigent tax funds, you are releasing them, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Because the way you're saying it is very confusing of, well, we're not paying this person. You are spending $31 million.
Okay, hold on, I know.
$31 million of indigent funds. Very simple.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
You're, you're expending $31 million on this item of taxes, correct? I don't care who's getting it, or what workaround or match program, you're spending $31 million of taxes, correct?
Yes, sir, for healthcare provided. Two HCP members eligible.
Okay, so, one of the requirements of the tax, I know, I have all of the original transcripts, I've committed them to memory at this point, from, since 1991, is that the individuals benefiting must be verified domiciled residents of Hillsborough County. Are you tracking that information, or are you not tracking that information?
So, sir, I'm gonna try to explain this so that you're comfortable with it. What happens, we treat patients, Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan treats any patient that's enrolled in our program. Okay, that's the first part. The second part of it is that TGH only, only provides care to the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan members for purposes of this program. We hold those, those dollars back and don't pay them, and just simply send their dollars that they would have been paid for that healthcare and for those residents of Hillsborough County, and then they would have been sent to ACHA. But they are all HCHCP clients, and they are all residents of Hillsborough County.
So then you do have the number of how many.
Yes, sir, I have to go get the claims, but I can count it.
Okay, so is this $31 million of taxes, of indigent taxes? This is on top of the 130 or so million that we're going to approve on a future item?
If you're referring to the direct payment program, yes, sir, that's different, but they're different programs, they're not really the same.
They're different programs, but are they being funded from the same tax program? Or they're, they're just entirely different? So how much taxes are gonna be expended from indigent on the future item? Are you going to explain that when we get there?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay, so we're going to, so then $31 million is the entire amount that we're approving from indigent to be expended for indigent services?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Out of the 195 million that we're going, that we received in taxes, we're expending 100, we're spending $31 million?
You're spending the $31 million that you would have spent on Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan from claims, and instead of paying them.
I get it, they, they do a match.
That's it, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Catherine Benson and Debbie DeWitt. I know you all spent the weekend working on this, and more to get this ready for us today with the October 1 deadline, so we certainly thank you for, for your efforts. To you, Jean, you know, I worked for you back in the day, and LIP has been around, and this is a wonderful, excellent, excellent partnership with all of our hospital providers in participating in the LIP program. Therefore, I move for approval.
Second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you recognized?
I'll just reiterate, thank you for the explanation. It's been around there forever. It's providing healthcare, bringing down federal dollars, and it's very well-tracked internally and everything else, and those numbers or whatever could have been asked for earlier this week if that was a concern.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you for answering the questions and taking time to do this. I just wanted to go on the record that, like, for somebody like me that's new, and I know this is a very unusual situation, I wasn't happy that I had less than 24 hours to make such a large decision. If they were working through the weekend, a heads-up for me in particular should have been extended. I'm gonna vote with it today, but I'm not happy about it, and here's why. I don't like to make decisions for the people in that short of time. It's just, it's not appropriate.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you. I received my briefing yesterday at 4:30 PM. For any suggestions that maybe I should have captured more of these numbers, I would say that I know more about this program than anybody sitting on this board, frankly, anybody in Hillsborough County government, because every single person refused to even accept the fact that this tax was not voted on by the voters of Hillsborough County. There's many elements of this tax that I believe that the county attorney needs to review, especially in light of the fact that the state's legislature altered the tax last year, that impacted only the residents of Hillsborough County, and I believe that possibly is endangering us to a lawsuit under the Fair Citizens Act of protecting them from them being unduly burdened, unlike any of the other surrounding counties and those things that we're going to get into. I would say that this tax, this LIP, this direct payment program, all may or may not be good, but the voters did not approve this. Okay, the voters of Hillsborough County, we, we like to say that democracy dies in the darkness. I assure you that democracy dies at 6:06 PM. I assure you that democracy dies at 6:06 PM on September 3 of 1991, when a bunch of county commissioners put forward an impose of a half percent sales tax on Hillsborough County, the third highest sales tax county in the entire state of Florida. Well, many people do not even understand what they're being taxed on and why we're so taxed, but why we're also simultaneously so behind on infrastructure. It's because the voters haven't had their right to express their voice on what they're being taxed on, and I think that that's something that needs to be remediated. Mr. Early, when this tax was originally imposed, do you know how much the county government was being required to legislatively to pay for this, this gap funding that was needed for indigent healthcare services?
Sir, I do not, I'd have to check it for you.
I, I know the number. I just, since I'm being challenged on it, Commissioner Kemp, do you know the number?
I will say this, the state has caused this problem. They, it's the state of Florida.
So you don't know the number?
It's the state of Florida.
All right, we're not going to go back and forth on all this.
So the number is $6 million. That's, that's the answer. If you would like to continue challenging my knowledge on the subject, I'd welcome it. The original number that was intended for us to relieve from property taxes of, of the taxpayers of Hillsborough County, the intent of this tax was that it was $6 million and escalating, and they tried to move in all the way back to County Administrator Frederick B. Carl. At that point, they thought that a half-cent sales tax would be appropriate because it generated such a low amount of money. What is our total property tax burden that we are legislatively required to refund to the state of Florida up to the federal government? What is that total legislatively required property tax number? You gave me the number yesterday. The number is $25 million.
$25 million is what we're talking about.
Thank you very much. The number now, it was $6 million in 1991. Now that total number is $25 million. This tax, at one point escalated to double digits, excuse me, to 200% in 1996 of what the original full intake of the tax was. They, they couldn't find a way to spend the tax fast enough. So the state's legislature had to get involved, and they had to do a special act only on Hillsborough County, forcing them for four years to reduce the tax from a half percent to 25% until they expended their reserves. At that point, until two years ago, the county did a good job of pushing in and maximally spending every penny of this tax that they could, keeping in line with the reserves. How much are the reserves for this program now, Mr. Early?
I believe the last number I saw was 424 million.
The number is $424 million of reserves on a tax that is now intaking $200 million. We are once again, history repeats itself, back to 1996, the exact same situation. Now, Mr. Early, have you participated in any conversations at your level to find ways to quickly expend this tax before we had a repeat of 1996, to find innovative ways to expend these reserves?
We looked at this for innovative and cost-effective programs that made sense for the Hillsborough County Healthcare Advisory Board. And they are the ones that oversee the expenditure of the funds to, at least for a recommendation. Then we bring them to the Hillsborough County Healthcare Board, Healthcare B.O.C.C., and then from there, gets approved, and then we put it in. So the answer is, have we identified innovative and cost-effective programs? The answer is yes. Do we do them on, based on what the intent was, with the regular legislation and so forth? I can only speak to the fact that it has innovative and cost-effective programs in that, and said that we're able to spend money on those innovative and cost-effective programs. And really, I think the most important thing about that is that healthcare plans evolve, healthcare costs evolve. And some of the, the plan, the plan, things that we're doing are really good for the community, and it's all for the indigent healthcare, and we basically look at them from that perspective. And we only do it within.
Mr. Early, hold on, you're, you're, you're not a legislator.
I'm not.
You are, you are not here to decide and define the laws that the state of Florida put in, and the intents of what these programs were. The, the cost of medical care expands for everybody, including those that do not rely on government subsidies. And now, I will say that I have always been an advocate for critical social safety nets, and, and I appreciate your comments, and I'm glad that you pointed out that the Healthcare Advisory Board is who does this, because some of the same people, one of the same folks is involved in this original 1991, where this Healthcare Advisory Board came forward with a recommendation of support for it. The taxpayers of Hillsborough County need to know that this full half percent, which plays towards the total 1.5% that the county has to utilize towards critical infrastructure, serious flooding that's damaging their personal property, making them rely on government subsidies themselves, and plainly, those that are just struggling to pay for medical care for themselves that aren't eligible for this program because they make too much money. They need to have the opportunity and understanding to know that this is a $200 million a year tax that is burdened on them, that there is constant work to maximally expend that. But because the sales revenues of Hillsborough County have done so well, we are once again over now, we are over 200% reserves for a plan that only called for 35% reserves. It's mismanagement of a program, it's mismanagement of the taxpayers of Hillsborough County, it's why we have such inflated burden on our residents. And at some point, we're going to have to get a handle on this and work to remediate these excessive reserves and huge expansion way beyond what the original intent of this tax was, which is irrefutable because it's on the public record, and I'm actually going to work with the clerk to try and get the cassette tapes that are in storage so I can listen to all of the public comments. So I understand that this program has to go through today, but I think that there is a very sparse or almost no understanding of this tax in Hillsborough County, and it's something that we have to get to the bottom of. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kemp.
I just want to say that the urgency for Commissioner Miller is not the fault of staff at this time. And I think if you want to put it as an item on the agenda some other time as you're, to go through this, you've certainly brought up, you know, tangentially on several things. But the emergency, to be clear, was not caused by the staff here, by their not responding. It was caused by the state, and apparently, it's a regular problem that the state created the emergency and, and have asked, and the staff and others have waited for the proper documents to file for what the proper rules and, in fact, can you speak to that for a minute? Can someone speak to that?
Yes, ma'am, I can. ACHA, ACHA basically did not provide any information for us until late Friday night, early, and the rest of it came Monday. We could not provide anything else until that time, because we didn't know the numbers, we didn't know how many, we didn't know who the providers were that were going to be actually participating. We didn't have any of that information. So it certainly wasn't in anybody's intent to do a pink slip. We've, we've had this issue with ACHA for the last, I don't know, 16 years maybe. And the, the problem that's related to that is that they just have things going on up there, and they don't give it to you right away. And so that's where I will stand on that, is just basically we couldn't avoid it. However, we appreciate you guys taking your time to let us talk to you and to let us brief you so that we can make sure you were at least somewhat aware of what was, the LIP program was, and so that we could answer those questions.
And, and as well, you get these numbers, but then the filing is required by October 1st where, to make good of this, and we have no opportunity, except for this meeting, to approve this. And this is a, I mean, really, I, I think the, the problem is with the state, and I think if there's an issue in this, and it sounds like there is continually an issue, that it should be, you know, maybe follow up with a letter of complaint to Governor DeSantis. Maybe they can move, because we just keep getting caught in this. I don't know if there's anything you want to add about the, the nature of this in terms of the, how, how it makes it difficult for state.
Okay, hold on one second here. We know it's a last-minute request. We know we have a deadline, and we all know it's going to pass right now. So let's keep the comments directed right on this motion, and we're going to move on. Okay, Bonnie, do you want to say anything?
No, I just wanted to apologize for all those who I had briefings with on Monday. I didn't realize it. I certainly would have mentioned it. It won't happen again.
Okay, Commissioner Moners.
Thank you. I'd just like to, to ask that we hold a workshop on our indigent healthcare program for an educational experience for the board members who do not really know about the healthcare plan, and so that we will not spend board time educating us during the time we should be working on our agenda to approve it. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
To be clear, that's all I was asking for, was that there was a heads-up. They did know on Friday that the possibility of it was coming, and so I could have been provided with some information, not exact numbers. So my, the reason why I got in the queue was to ask for a workshop, so I appreciate that, and I would support that. I think it's important. Clearly, we all don't know enough about on this subject.
Commissioner Wollstone.
Thank you. Real briefly, I'm just going to put something up, it'll take two seconds on the Elmo. Are one of the recipients of this, this LIP program going to be Tampa Family Health Services?
Yes, sir.
Many times over the past two years, folks have told me that nonprofits are not profitable. A lot of them are very surprised to see that a lot of nonprofits are in fact very profitable. This is page one of their IRS 990. Go ahead and flip it to page two. I would just like to demonstrate to the public that these are very heavily subsidized nonprofits, and their CEO, as you can see on line two there, gets paid $800,000 a year. And I think that that's something that every single citizen needs to understand when they hear the term nonprofit and how they're getting subsidized, that this is, these are organizations that are there to most, to help the most economically disadvantaged folks in our community with CEOs that make $800,000 a year, heavily subsidized by the federal government and now your local government. Thank you very much.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Please record your vote on B3.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, next item.
Oh, my goodness, it's at 10 o'clock. So we can now go to item D1. This is going to be the first public hearing for the non-adlorm special assessment for the purpose of benefiting assessed properties through enhanced medical payments. And then after this item, which is the public hearing, is then the related item to approve the letters of agreement.
Jean Early again, Department of Healthcare Services. Agenda item D1 is a motion that you conduct a public hearing to consider approval of the special assessment resolution and the assessment rule. The assessment resolution will allow the county to impose and collect a non-adlorm assessment, adlorm, for the purpose of benefiting assessed properties through enhanced Medicaid programs. If you approve this, excuse me, if you approve this resolution, the special assessment will only be opposed on property owned or leased by hospitals, and will be calculated at 3.79% of inpatient net patient revenue and 0.70% of outpatient net patient revenue. And it'll be collected by directly billing each hospital. The special assessment resolution is structured to ensure that we include the county costs associated with the development levy, administration, and collection of the assessments. This special assessment resolution has been publicly noticed in accordance with ordinance 2023 to 20-20, and it's my understanding we have representatives of the hospital who have signed up for the public comic. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. I know we had two individuals that had signed up, Steve Harris and a Joe Johnson. Either you want to make any comments? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here representing Tampa General, Steve Harris, Senior Vice President for Payroll and Government Affairs. And I'll keep my remarks very brief. But first and foremost, on behalf of Tampa General and our patients, I just want to thank each and every one of the council members or the Commissioners for your support of Tampa General in general, but this program specifically, these two programs, I should say, which are so critical to taking care of the, really the most vulnerable population in Tampa. Let me talk very briefly about each, each one of these programs. The low-income pool, or LIP, as we commonly refer to it, as reflected in the most recent data, and guess what? That data just got posted yesterday, as we talked about. But the state posted that data yesterday, and in that data, it shows Tampa General with $73 million worth of charity write-offs for the most recent reporting year. That's one of the highest amounts in the state. It is easily the highest amount in the, in not only Hillsborough County, but the Tampa Bay region. So it, it's, it's a large number. This, this program helps mitigate some of that cost for us, and is, that's why it's so critical. It really ensures that we're able to continue providing those services to, you know, the charity patients. We're talking about charity, patients with no insurance, no, no health, no, no county insurance, no Medicaid insurance, completely uninsured. Moving to the second program, the directed payment program, DPP, we like to call that one, that is a Medicaid shortfall program. It's a federal program. So Medicaid, the cost of providing care to Medicaid patients is here. We all know Medicaid reimbursement's down here. That shortfall is what this program aims to, to focus on. So this program, it's a federal program, like I said, it allows us to draw down federal dollars. And the best thing about it is it's through the non-adlorm special assessment to the hospitals, it costs taxpayers $0. Costs the state of Florida $0 for the general revenue. So it's a, it's another critical program. Florida is not known for one of the highest Medicaid reimbursements in the, in the nation, and so that, that kind of goes to why this program's so important. So I will keep, keep my comments brief. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And also, if there is a workshop, Commissioner Hagan, I think you know Tampa General is more than happy to participate in that and be helpful.
All right, thank you, Steve. Joe Johnson?
Good morning. Good morning. Chairman Hagan and members of the council, thank you very much for the support that you have provided. My name is Joe Johnson. I'm the CEO at Advent Health Carrollwood, and I'm joined here today by Tyson Davis, the CFO for Advent Health Tampa as well. And we're here to just really say thank you. Your help with this DPP program has been important, and the last two years has been a significant benefit to us. And so we would just like to say thank you for that, also for the, the support from the staff. Both Jean and Debbie specifically have been very instrumental in guiding us through this, supporting us, and making this easy for us. And this, as you have already heard, is a very important, critically important process for us. It grants us some support for funds that are needed to support our hospitals in Hillsborough County. And certainly Advent Health is needing that support to provide care to these needing patients in our communities. So I thank you very much for your consideration of this again.
Thank you, sir. All right, that closes the public hearing. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just want to thank both Mr. Harris and Mr. Johnson for those excellent, excellent explanations of how this works. And I'll, I'll say this, too. We need every cent we can of federal dollars, of matching dollars for our, and it doesn't just benefit the low-income people, it benefits our entire health ecosystem, our entire medical system, our hospitals, to keep hospitals in place and to make sure that they're reimbursed and that they can, you know, actually pay the expenses that are made. I will say for the record, we're one of 10 states without Medicaid expansion, and at, because we are not, including Texas and Florida, but a lot of conservative states are, without Medicaid expansion funds, we are losing $5 billion a year, B with a B, $5 billion a year that could come down to pay for the health of our citizens, to pay to support our hospitals, our medical facilities, and our medical community here across the state of Florida. So with that, I'll move approval because we very desperately need this, and this is bringing down our federal dollars.
We have a motion to approve D1 by Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, then B2. Is there a presentation, or?
There is not. Those are the agreements, the letters of agreement with ACHA.
All right. Jean, do you need to add anything? Gene, do you need to add anything?
Sir, it's basically the, I think you've heard most of it. The agenda item B2 is requesting to approve funds, requesting to approve letters of agreement, corresponding questionnaires with AKA for the direct payment program in an amount to There's no funding requirement for this since funding will be collected from the hospitals through the imposition of a non-adlorum special investment that was requested by them, just approved.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, with that, can you have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers. Second, Commissioner Winstall, seeing you're in the queue, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, next item.
The next item is also a public hearing. This is item D2. This is to hold a public hearing relating to Phase IV of the Community Investment Tax. Kevin Bricky will present this item.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Managing Budget. Item D2 is a public hearing to receive comment and to ask for approval of the addition of six projects to the approved project list of the current CIT Phase IV. This is asking for the addition of five transportation projects and one public safety project. This would approve them to be eligible for CIT. And then in the FY '25 budget, which you'll be considering tomorrow evening, there are dollars, CIT dollars, associated with those projects. So I'll read the projects and the dollars associated. The bridge and guardrail program, $10 million. Bridge improvements, $5 million. Intersection improvement program, $5 million. Safe routes to schools program, $6 million. Sidewalk repair program, $12 million. Sly Anderson Road Fire Station, $12 million, which really goes along with the usage of the CIT, of the board's portion of CIT up to this point, where 49% has been for transportation and 24% for public safety. So at this time, it would be appropriate to take public comment.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. I know we had one person sign up. Denise Herndon, is Ms. Herndon here? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. The CIT tax was originally sold to the constituents for a new stadium back in '96, and it has been getting changed as to what those funds are being sent for. If we had more transparency with the spending of Hillsborough County funds through all of our taxes, all of our CIT money, all the taxing that we're getting, what I'm learning through these county commissioners' meetings is you're just transferring it from one place to another so that legalities can fund for things. As a healthcare worker, a lot of immigrants who are the LIPSs come into the ERs for colds. You don't do anything for a cold, but our CIT tax, we wouldn't even need it if our infrastructure was right. You guys, this county commissioners can't do anything about past county commissioners, but you can do something about what's going on presently with our funds. If you don't get into your nearly $9 billion budget and find out where all of the money is going to, how can you vote on these things? I met the first person as a respiratory therapist when I was working, seeing these immigrants coming in, and here we don't even have sidewalks. I know a lot of people during COVID realized how many sidewalks we don't have because a lot of people got out and started walking. This should have been taken care of before these communities were even built. So you county commissioners, like I said earlier, you are stewards of our community, and you are making decisions on things that you really don't know everything that there is, and all of these gentlemen that have come up with these different facilities, they're not healthcare workers, they're bean counters. And granted, these people need funding for healthcare, but they shouldn't be spending over $1,000 for a common cold, and you don't give antibiotics for a common cold. It's a virus, just like COVID. COVID is nothing but a genetically modified cold. A cold is a coronavirus. And the CDC couldn't even tell the American people how to properly wash their hands because if you can't properly wash your hands, masks and social distancing mean nothing, and everybody in the healthcare field that are good caregivers know this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. All right, that closes public comment. Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you. I'm with you 100% there, Ms. Herndon. I just want to point out to the folks, as we go for a CIT renewal, this agreement and the approved projects list is one of the things that we change to where on the renewal, there won't be these, it's one approved list from now on, right? And it's for the whole 15 years on the CIT renewal.
So you're speaking of the new, that's going to be voted on?
It's different than this.
You all did 15 years, as opposed to the other one was--
Five, like this one is. And just for folks watching, if you look at this list that first started getting approved in 2021, we're just at the end of 2024 adding the sidewalk repair program, which I just think is a travesty and goes back to all of the points that I said about our complete lack of prioritization. It goes back to the revelations that our matrix of priorities in our own budget is just a huge bullet point sheet, basically, list of items. It's not a matrix. It's not being reviewed. But with that being said, all that we're doing is adding these few programs. I think that these few programs are good and a benefit to the community. I just think that they were done way out of time when they should have been, so I'll move for approval.
Got motion approved. Commissioner Winstall.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Cohen.
My only difference with you is that I think we should look at the glass half-full rather than half-empty, and I think that when you look at the types of projects that are being funded by this, and that includes one new fire station and exactly the kind of transportation and infrastructure improvements that our speakers were talking about this morning, and that we all agree are so critical for the community, I think that we should be glad that we have the ability to make these investments. And I think if the CIT is renewed, we can make a lot more progress on these issues than if it isn't. So I'm glad to support this, and I really hope to see more of these types of projects in the future.
Commissioner Kemp.
And I'll just say yes, too, because we, for many of those years, those CIT dollars were all spent at the beginning of when the CIT was made, and for years and years, there has not been any excess funding. But I will tell you, too, that when we did receive, and I thank staff for putting this together, and I know that they've been working hard to meet the needs, but we really have not had the resources. But this is a good news story, not a bad news story, and we have for years very much focused on sidewalks. We focused on resurfacing. We've focused on preserving our assets, but it's a big ticket. It's very, very costly to do these things, and there's been a struggle in Hillsborough County to do that. We have a very low, believe it or not, we have a very low millage rate for unincorporated county compared to any of Plant City, Temple Terrace, or City of Tampa. So providing the resources we've needed to do this work has been extraordinarily difficult, and that's why we've been so behind, but this is good.
Okay, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Those are all our regular items. We just have future discussion items.
Any board member have any issues? Commissioner Myers.
Just want to be clear on the workshop on the indigent healthcare, that it happens after the general election. Okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Florida Clean Air Act and the 2002 constitutional amendment with 71% approval by the voters of Florida restricted smoking indoors, and I would like staff to analyze whether or not those two amendments in the Florida Clean Air Act would restrict the smoking of recreational marijuana indoors in Hillsborough County. Is that something we can do? Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we're adjourned.